Um. Great. All right. Thanks. So um I will call this. Um, this special meeting of Tuesday, September twenty six, twenty twenty three of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order at six thirty three. We've got uh. What is it? We've got six um regular members online. Um, and. Um, the one. Agenda and one order of business and I used to review the draft subdivision regulations um. And um with that, I will turn it over to Glenn Chalder, who is uh. Who's, you know, back with us after after we all agreed on a. On a couple of month um break over the summer. Um, I'm feeling well rested, so uh. Let's uh um jump in, Glenn. Why don't you walk us through and then we can uh as um as we discussed maybe before we uh. Before we started the meeting that we'll try to keep this to a couple of hours um and see where we get to and see what the plan is going forward.
Perfect. I'm excited to be back. You may recall as part of our scope of work that we talked about. You know, last fall, there were really sort of two issues here. Modifications to the zoning regulations, most of those the commission has adopted. Um, the one outstanding element there that we carried over was conservation development. Um, and I think uh tonight to make a transition to start talking about the subdivision regulations is probably a good next step. And part of the reason for that is. I think sometimes conservation developments uh do involve subdivisions. So I think the two topics can uh kind of go together. Um subdivision regulations are a function of a planning commission and not a zoning commission. Um, but they are a set of regulations that govern how land gets subdivided. And I think they differ from zoning regulations in a couple of key ways. I think if we take a giant step back, subdivision regulations are almost like consumer protection regulations. And when I say that, what I mean is is that when the commission reviews a subdivision, you are reviewing the buildability of the lots. That it complies with the zoning regulations, that it will support a septic system, it will support a well. So if somebody was to purchase a lot from a developer. They would have confidence that this lot can in fact be built on. It's not like the old stories of buying marshland in Florida, and then you find out it's marshland, you can't do anything with it. So the commission's job here is really not related to uses of land. It's in a residential zone, for example, or a commercial zone or industrial zone. But it's really related to the buildability of the parcel. And if it's a simple lot along a road served by a driveway, it's one level of review. Um, and when it gets to the point that some of the lots need access from roadways. Either public or private, that's where the commission's job gets a little bit more intricate. Because we get into guarantees that the road will in fact be built. And again, that's kind of like a consumer protection thing where somebody who buys the lot. The road would not necessarily be in there on the date that they close on the lot. But they would know that the developer of the subdivision has set funds aside for the construction of the road. So again, I I think if we go into this and think about this as sort of a consumer protection type of uh scenario. Um, I think it's probably a good way to proceed. Um, any questions before I crank open the regulations? All right, here we go. Hard to believe that the draft, the first draft was February. Um, what was that? Seven, seven months ago. Um, but I think the point I'd like to make uh with you is to really kind of first of all, talk through the table of contents. So the table of content starts off, it's the basic statutory authority, um purposes and applicability in the statute. Section one E and here is a key one. Um, in zoning. Should somebody propose something which isn't in accordance or compliance with the zoning regulations, then really they need to get a variance. From the zoning Board of Appeals. In the case of subdivision, the commission can actually act as its own Board of Appeals. And that's what section one E is about, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Section two is the interpretation. These are the definitions of terms we're going to be using here. Um, and these are a little bit different than zoning because they relate to subdivision matters, not particularly zoning matters. Section three is now the requirements for a parcel or lot, and this is again what a purchaser is going to be buying. And the question in a sense is what standards would apply? So we talk about things like the land has to be suitable for development, their uh important features need to be protected. Um, the requirements for lot layout have to be consistent with the zoning regulations. The open space set aside requirements, which I think is an important issue uh for Kent. And then provisions required in the statute related to solar access and soil erosion and sediment control. Section four then relates to infrastructure requirements, and this is where a lot is required to. Put in roads in some situations or driveways to have adequate sewage disposal and water supply. Make adequate provisions for storm drainage, utilities, um and in some cases sidewalks or paths. Or even rural fire protection, and these are some of the things we'll talk about there. And then the next three sections really relate to procedures. What happens? Through the application process, all the way up to the commission approving an application. And then we get into post approval procedures, and the commission may not have done a subdivision in a while, but. The requirements are that a an approved subdivision be filed on the land records, the chairman has to sign the maps. If there's any financial guarantee to be provided, that has to be filed in that timeframe. Um, but this kind of happens behind the scenes after the approval has been granted. Um, and then section seven is construction procedures to make sure that any roads or. Or other uh physical elements are appropriately constructed. So that's the basic gist of the subdivision regulations in terms of the major components. Um, what I think we could make sense to do, if there's any questions now, we'll go through it. Otherwise, I think we can launch into section by section. And please interrupt me if there's questions or anything else along the way. Does does that make sense? Got it. Um, so the uh first section we call introduction here. Um, basically, we get the statutory authority from chapter one twenty six, the Connecticut general statutes. Um, the statutory purposes uh for what the commission uh is authorized to do as part of sub regulating subdivisions of land. Um, the regulations apply to any subdivision or re-subdivision of land uh in Kent. Um, and any subdivision that is caused or created without approval of the commission is is not valid. And uh town clerk shall not, you know, record on the land records. Um, and then uh overall enforcement provisions um are also laid out here. This is the section I mentioned earlier about modification of standards. There's two types of standards which are identified here. Um, one of which is uh this uh section two here, modification of a submission requirement. If the plan says that somebody has to submit a plan for road construction. But they're not actually constructing a road, then the commission might waive that or. They might waive another design. Uh, or plan submission requirement. So, okay, we don't feel we need that information for this subdivision, and you would grant that type of waiver. The next one shown here in item three is a modification of a design standard. Um, some years ago, when I was a town planner, the issue that arose on a particular subdivision is that the road standards had a maximum road grade. And the topography of the property was such in its width. That for a short section of roadway, they had to go above that maximum grade. They requested a modification, the commission reviewed it, talked to the fire department, everybody was okay with it for that short distance, and the waiver was granted. So this is a scenario where the commission can have. Flexibility um in this type of situation. The applicant would request, the commission would review and either grant or not grant. Um, that modification of design standard. So a little bit of pixie dust, but I think it's available to help the commission.
Hey Glenn.
Yeah.
In uh in one E, the overview and then the modifications of submission requirement.
Yep.
And the 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 right for a waiver, does that, should that be requested by the applicant as seems to be required? In the second part of three A that have received.
So I think Matt down here. I think what it says. As part of granting any modification or waiver of a design standard, the commission shall have received a specific written request from the subdivision for the modification or waiver.
That's great. So that applies to to one and two above.
Correct.
Great.
Okay.
Yep.
Oops, sorry. Oops. Um, and then there's just some administrative provisions related to amendments and appeals and. Effective dates and and the other stuff. So that's pretty much, I guess, let's call it sort of boilerplate at the beginning. To set up the fact that we have the authority to do this, um and it applies to any uh subdivision of land. Um. The next section is interpretation of the regulations. Um, and this is the types of terms that we're going to be using. Um, general terms such as uh shall or may. Um, and if any terms are not defined, we would have the ability to look at the general statutes. Uh, the zoning regulations, the building code, or other reference sources for these types of. Uh, words or terms. And then we just start to get into the terms themselves. And again, you'll see that these are a little bit different than the types of words in the zoning regulations. Um, but provisions related to A two surveys, applications, what's known as a conservation restriction. Um, date of approval, um director of health, um and these types of of things. Drainage. The current, I've got a note off here in the sidebar. On this page, let me just blow that up for a second. In your current subdivision regulations, the definition of driveway states access to not more than two dwellings or four dwelling units. Or a single commercial agricultural industrial enterprise. So. I generally would like to encourage the commission to say that this is not really a definition, it's a regulation. A drive was a driveway, and the regulation then is the limitation on the number of lots that can be served. So um. I think we should look for another place to park this. Um, but I don't think the definition is the right place. Is the commission okay with with that concept?
Yes.
Got it. Um. Other provisions related to engineer erosion, excavation, financial guarantee. State statutes have changed in the last five years, uh maybe six years. We don't call them bonds anymore now that phrase is financial guarantee, but what we mean is is a bond. Or a financial instrument, cash even, that guarantees that improvements will be completed. Uh. I guess the next issue I wanted to talk with you about. Is the concept of what is a subdivision and a re-subdivision? So under Connecticut law. Everybody. Who owns a piece of land which is large enough to be split into two conforming lots or parcels. Gets what's often called a free cut or a first cut. And so what that means is that uh. Perhaps there was concern expressed when the legislation was originally adopted that. Well, I I just want to cut off a lot for my daughter or something else like that. In the scenario was. The town doesn't get to regulate under the subdivision regulations until the third lot is created. So if if Matt owns a parcel of land and he wants to cut off one lot. Provided that lot conforms with the zoning regulations, he can go ahead and file that map on the land records. When he now wants to cut off another lot, that's the third parcel, and now subdivision kicks in. So the definition of subdivision, I'm going to blow this up. The division of a tractor parcel of land into three or more parts or lots. Made subsequent to the adoption of subdivision regulations by the commission. For the purpose, whether immediate or future of sale or building development. And expressly excluding development for municipal conservation or agricultural purposes. So if somebody wants to cut off a piece of land to deed it to their neighbor for it to become part of their lot, it's not a separate building lot. That's not regulated. Somebody wants to cut off a piece of land to deed it to the land trust. Provided the remaining land conforms with the regulations, they can go ahead and do that as well. So the operative part here, I think. Is the division of land into three or more parts. For the purpose of sale or building development. So that kind of describes the commission's jurisdiction over subdivisions. Okay, so. Three or more lots, and it's for building or development purposes, and this is again sort of where the consumer protection. Uh, function I think that the commission provides here then goes into effect.
Well, Glenn, what if um Matt has this um lot and he cuts off one parcel for his child? And then ten uh years later decides to divide the retained lot into two lots. Would that fall within this definition?
It does, Shelby. So that's a great point. So again, he had one parcel. Cut off the second parcel for his daughter, but kept a large parcel. And then ten years later, or thirty years later, now he wants to cut one off for his grandson, right? That's the third lot, and now you have to come see the commission because we're going to regulate that. So. The first one, again, we call it a free cut because it's kind of a freebie, and then after that, we regulate. And the only um thing that I'd like to point out relative to that. Is the definition of, bear with me. A re-subdivision. A re-subdivision. Is a special kind of subdivision. Where uh it's a change in the map of an approved or recorded subdivision, if such change affects any road layout on the map. Any area reserved for public use such as open space, et cetera. Or creates an additional building lot. So imagine, for example, that. Matt did a subdivision, sold parcels to Shelby, sold sold a parcel to Shelby. And then he decides later on, he wants to sneak another lot into the subdivision and sell it to Wes. The issue is Matt's now attempting to do what's called a re-subdivision. Shelby bought the land or her lot based on the design shown on the original subdivision. So if you're going to go change that. A re-subdivision gets special attention from the commission, and you are required under the statutes to have a public hearing on that. So the same rules apply. But the process for a re-subdivision has to include a public hearing. Rather than it being discretionary on the part of the commission.
So Glenn, you could also, you could also call it a modification, right?
Um, I think the wording is probably important, Wes. A modification.
I agree with re-subdivision, but it's it's like a modification.
It is, but only if that modification does one of the three things. It changes the road layout. Number two, it you know, changes or affects any area reserved for for public use. Or diminishes the size of any lot shown thereon and creates an additional building on it. So if it triggers any of those three things. It's gone from a modification now to a re-subdivision. Um, and that requires a public hearing so that anybody who bought land beforehand is notified. That this sort of material change is going on.
Glenn?
Yes.
Um. Uh, I'm sort of skirting around this and maybe um or you are, or the whole thing is. And now's a good time because Shelby kind of brought it up and all these. I'm a little confused or just need a better grip on ownership. Um. Are we talking about the land and it doesn't matter who owns it and how many owners change hands or what type? And and maybe my question makes no sense.
Well, no.
I just kind of don't, I mean, we keep referring to somebody gives a piece to their daughter and then this, but what if? The ownership was completely discreet and separate, and does that then take it out of the hands of subdivision? I mean, what keeps a parcel? In the this definition of subdivision versus just, okay, I sold half of my property to X Y Z and. Is it still a subdivision? I mean.
Okay, so let's take the example you just gave. You sold half of your property to X Y Z. So assuming that you had never. Since the adoption of subdivision regulations, cut off any land and sold it. Then then that sailed X Y Z is what we would call a free cut.
Right.
Okay, that's that's not a problem.
Right.
Now, if X Y Z comes along and says, oh, we want to take this land we got from Alice and subdivide it into three lots. Right? Because they want to sell those lots. Now that is a subdivision and that is regulated.
Okay.
But but that's assuming that this parcel is um uh unsubdivided prior to December of nineteen fifty five. It doesn't matter who owns it. It's 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 just.
Yeah, it Wes is right. The parcel could have been sold ten times between nineteen fifty five and now. And everybody just purchased the property, used the property, and then sold the property to the next owner. It's when we create a lot. Or subdivide a separate parcel. So what I commonly look at is the history or lineage of the parcel. And say, okay, nineteen fifty five, it was one parcel of land, and now in nineteen seventy three, that one parcel became two. Okay, good to go. But now in twenty twenty three, somebody wants to cut one of those two parcels up, bum. That's now the subdivision. You can't just keep doing free cuts or free splits. Along the way forever.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
I think that's that's the type of thing I think we'd, we want to try to make sure that people understand here in the in the in the whole uh scenario overall.
Hey Glenn.
Sure.
What I'm finding a little confusing as of late is that it seems like there's a tendency. For people in the past and a little bit in the present that. They're splitting off lots not for, not in land use terms, but in like. Other terms like real estate terms and filing them on the land records for tax purposes or for other things that I. Went around in circles with Mike on this for one particular lot that it happened with, which was a non-conforming, you know, zoning lot. And it was being sold, but. That that just happens and you kind of have to keep it separate. Is that?
Well, I might need more information, Ty, but it sounds to me that if there was a non-conforming parcel. That person A sold it to group B. There's still one parcel of land, that transaction can happen. It's the sale of real estate. Um, without regulation. However, should person A say, I'm going to break this into two or three pieces. That potentially now is a subdivision and could be regulated.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess you need more information, but it's it's. I Mike was explaining that it was it was separate. There's the real estate law, and then there's the land use law. And it really does confuse things when you're talking about the chain of. You know, since nineteen fifty five, what's happened with the property? When these maps are being filed on the land records and they're not actually approved parcels. As zoning parcels through land use. Um, I I was just curious if you knew much about that or how to keep that separate.
No, I think that uh in a perfect world, the town clerk's office is going to be your best friend, right? Because you're going to have documents and filed and legal descriptions. And you would be able to go back and now start to track it through. And the maps, really, that are being filed are really the godsend here. Um, when I was a town planner, I had good relationship with the town clerk. And the town clerk would say, Glenn, I got a map submitted for filing. I need you to take a look at this. So I would run over and take a look at it. And if need be, I'd go back and do a little bit of research and then call the town clerk back and say, this is fine because blankety blank. Um, and that was uh very helpful. And we did have in in town hall. We had saved aerial photographs from the nineteen fifties that had been used as assessor's maps with the lots drawn right on the aerial photograph in ink. And that made it really easy. For us to go back. So if you if you don't have that, it may take a little bit more effort. But an ownership change generally will not trigger the subdivision regulations. But when the number of parcels goes from one to two to three to four, yes. Now you're looking at the uh very likely uh scenario that it's subject to the subdivision regulations. And that shouldn't be filed by the town clerk until it's got the chairman's signature on it.
Okay.
So Glenn, one more thing um uh that I just thought of uh. For example, conservation easements, which require a meets and bounds, uh it is is delineated. Um, um, uh, it goes into um a. Conservation group, but that's not a subdivision.
No, it's not.
That's that runs with with the property.
But it's an encumbrance on the property, but it's not creating a lot for sale for building development, right? That was the definition of subdivision. Get back to that. So excluding development. From conservation or agricultural purposes. So conservation easement doesn't, it's automatically excluded. And it's not for the purposes of sale or building development, so.
So so conservation easements, however, going to a land trust or whatever. The people receiving the land can use it in some way.
True.
Correct.
Depending on what the easement says, yes.
Yeah. So should that or should not that be a concern?
I don't think so. And this is where, again, we get into, I think, the giant step back and thinking about the purpose of subdivision regulations. What we're trying to do is protect. Purchasers in the future that they can have confidence that the lot they're looking at is in fact worth the proposed sale price. Because it's been vetted by the town, it'll support a well and a septic system, you can get a driveway into the building site. It meets the setbacks and lot area and other standards. Um, and therefore you are good to go.
Right. That that that's just a question.
I agree. That's, these are good questions because I think this is a.
But Glenn, but Glenn, it doesn't mean that that property then can turn around and also su- support three more septic systems. Right? I mean.
That would now be a re-subdivision.
Yeah.
Or. It it's. I- i- if somebody comes in for creation of three lots, that meets the the trigger tester being a subdivision.
Right.
And now they, in the future, they want to take one of those. Lots and cut that into three lots. That is now a re-subdivision. And provided those lots conform with the zoning requirements. They are entitled to get approval from the commission. And you might look at it and say, yes, we've got a clean bill of health from Torrington Area Health District on the well in the septic system. All the lots have the required frontage and can support a driveway. I don't see any major concerns here with regard to this in terms of its buildability, and the commission might see their way through to an approval. So it's a little bit different than a zoning application, and this is up, so we recently, I worked with you a little bit on the uh. Uh, drawing a blank on the name of the road, uh Ty, uh High Watch, the little three lot subdivision. Um, what was the name of the street on that?
Carter Road.
Carter, thank you. I know it began with the C, but I knew it wasn't Camp Road. So, okay, Carter. So i- if memory serves correct. Um, they wanted to create three parcels there. I believe one of the parcels already had a house on it. So. Prior to this application, it was probably one parcel of land with one house. High Watch wants to cut off two more lots. That's now certainly a subdivision. Um, and so they were coming to talk to the commission about that process, and. You may recall there was a hiccup because. The question came down to getting their approval from the health district. So the commission couldn't sign off on the health district issue, so therefore. Um. The suggestion was this was this was not ripe for an application. We we can't approve it in its current scenario. So that's the type of situation. I think it's, if I understand correctly, it's been some time since. Um, Kent received a subdivision application. They were, they're quite common in the sixty, seventies and eighties. Um, Kent received a subdivision application. They were they're quite common in the sixties, seventies and eighties. Um, they've become less common uh sort of over time. Um, but I think having a good set of regulations is a good way for you guys to go today. But I think that covers uh most of the definitions. Again, it's it's like the definitions in the zoning regulations. They're just meant to define the term. Should we need to come back to them later? Any any questions on? Interpretation or definitions? So the next section, section three is about parcel and lot requirements. Three A says? You know, if the land's unsuitable for the building purposes because of flooding, inadequate drainage, steep slopes, depth to bedrock or whatever? Then, you know? You don't have to prove a a building lot simply because it complies with the zoning standards. You have to meet the s- standards in the regulation for buildability, et cetera. Three B is about protection of important features. Uh, in the P O C D, we talked about scenic views and character areas and similar types of things. And the issue might be even with your ridgeline uh horizon line regulations. You could request or require as part of a subdivision that scenic views be preserved. Uh, agriculture lands uh be preserved or other types of important features of the parcel? Um, be preserved or protected. Areas of flooding, um, et cetera. And this is where you would have? Conversation with an applicant about what you see are the important features on the parcel. Um, and work with them to get a subdivision design that's uh reflective of the character of the land.
Glenn, what's to what's to prevent the commission, this commission or a future commission from? Reading? Three B one?
Yeah.
Saying any subdivision shall be designed. Right? So shall is 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 we we saw on the in the definitions that that's a? Um, that's a directive, right?
Yep.
Um, to preserve in A, right, to preserve? Farmland soils, pastures, other unique features, open space? Um, and move on to B, you know, community resources.
Yep.
Um, what is what is to prevent us from saying that the whole parcel? Um, contains farmland soils, for example, you know, my it's my? The I've I've had the first cut on my property and I've got? You know, t- two ten acre parcels and they're both predominantly in in farmland soils. What's to prevent the commission from saying? Where we we are bound to protect and preserve? Farmland soils. You can't subdivide.
Yeah, I thi- I think the commission has got to be really careful in that type of scenario because we don't bring in constitutional principles and other things, but the the concept of? Um, property rights and property uh? Values are also an important consideration. There is this concept in land use law. I'm sure that the commission has heard this before, what's called referred to as a taking of property. That you have through regulation made somebody's property of valueless. Um, that you have uh? Taken away their property rights. And I think that I would urge the commission in a situation with such a uh? Scenario you described in terms of agricultural soils and other stuff? To fr- try to find a harmonious balance, or even in the case we were talking about before of a conservation subdivision. To use that approach, which provides a lot more flexibility in terms of the location of the lots, et cetera. And might provide a way to preserve, let's say, sixty or seventy percent of the farmland soils. Um, and then development happens on thirty percent. So I think this gives the commission the ability to have a conversation about important resources. Um, but I would urge you to s- Not use this as a way to deny any development of a parcel. I think that's likely to present a lot of challenges uh for the commission.
It it it's? I would be in favor of trying to find some different language, some additional language or some some? Some different language that doesn't doesn't seem to direct us? Um, to preserve? All of these features.
I think that's a good point, Matt. So let me uh put my thinking cap on. Um, and I'm sure there's wording that I can come up with for this? That allows the commission to have a conversation to guide the application? But not? Deny any future development of any property in Kent because there's always significant trees or? Hillsides or uh historic sites or other things on on stone walls on parcels. We're not saying you can't subdivide it because it has stone walls. We're asking you to be cognizant and sensitive to that. So let me see what I can find for wording there. I think that's an excellent point. Um? And down at the bottom here, I was just looking at the language here in three. During the review process, the commission can require the preservation enhancement of specific specific? Specific features identified above. And you can also ask for conservation restrictions or dedication of open space to protect those resources. So you can? Um, use it as a way to sort of guide the layout of the development? Um, to protect the resources you think are particularly important.
Yeah, and that's funny if you think that that softens it enough. Um, I know I know this particular commission is a um? Is pretty careful with the with the the written regulation, right? So we're we're we're? Look at the look at what the regulations say and try to decide what's right based on what the regulations are telling us.
Yep. No, I like your comment. I'm I'm already starting to think about alternative languages on that. So I'm uh looking forward to working on that. Um, section three C is the lot layout. Um, provisions of the regulations. It has to comply with the zoning uh regulations in terms of lot size? And setbacks and frontage and other types of standards. Um, number two, the shape, size, location, topography, et cetera of the lot. Um? Demonstrate there's no foreseeable difficulties for topography or other conditions in, you know, building on the parcel? Um, et cetera. Um, that's really the sort of part of the commission's key job on this. Um, so just making sure that the land is going to be um buildable and approvable. There can be a scenario that happens? Where somebody tries to create land? Um, which is not approvable at this time? And they want to put a designation on it, not an approved building lot? And I urge the commission, don't do this.
This is what I was talking about. That's exactly what I was saying.
Okay, so if it happened in the past, Ty, I I I'm sorry upfront because you know that now you have to go back continually? And verify why that provision was there? And oftentimes a piece of land gets sold and people say to the potential purchaser? Oh, you can build on this. And it turns out there's a map in the land record that says, no, you cannot.
That's exactly what I was talking about. And it's like it's? Trying to sort your way through that when you're trying to determine whether? You need a subdivision, a re-subdivision, a first cut, and then you've got all that mess.
Yes. So my my advice in a situation like this is there's some reason that we do not have septic or water or other testing? Then that parcel, that area of land should be combined with an adjacent parcel. It's an extra large lot and at some time in the future, if somebody gets their ducks in a row, it could become a building lot at that that time. But to care about a separate parcel? But not dedicated to what were the conditions we had before conservation, agriculture, or whatever the third one was, which were specifically? It just doesn't work. Over time, people forget staff changes, commission changes, and suddenly there's a house on a lot that there should never should have been.
Right. So it it appears that in Kent, the? The land records are riddled with these and they're coming out of the woodwork. Just they got filed. They never went through the land use office. They just went directly to the clerk? And got filed. So? I mean, it is what it is, but just a heads up to.
No, I agree. And I think that uh it's hard after the fact to manage these. So I think before the fact, we simply say, we're not going to create a parcel of land with the notation, not an approved building lot. You can try to change the wording, I suppose. But the idea is no, just don't do it. Because these types of problems have occurred in communities all around the state. Um, so those are the provisions related to lot layout. And then we get into the provision about open space. I've tried to be a little creative here for the commission because I can see for as part of our work on the P O C D, the? Efforts over the years from the Kent Land Trust, uh? What was we Antinog? It's got a new name today. Um, but just efforts on the part of people to preserve open space in the community. And these? Provisions uh create? Uh, an opportunity to preserve land as part of the subdivision? Um, for protecting important features or natural resources or scenic views and other things? Um, and to make sure that that happens. The percentage that's in here is at least fifteen percent of the total area of the subdivision shall be set aside for open space. Um, and then? Reserve for open space purposes will be clearly delineated. Um, the location and con- configuration of the uh open space, the commission can have? Uh, significant influence on that? So if you want the open space along a creek bed or some other type of scenario or an area of a scenic view? You can require that as part of the uh subdivision approval.
Glenn, is is fifteen percent a fairly common number throughout? I I think that I've? Seen fifteen percent a lot.
I would say that the number generally used in most municipalities in the state historically has been ten percent. So Darrell? Go ahead, Alan.
Is it ten or fifteen percent of the entire parcel? Or is it ten or fifteen percent of what is biz- buildable on that parcel?
The entire?
This?
Entire parcel.
Yep. So if somebody comes in with a hundred acres, then fifteen acres shall be set aside for open space unless otherwise modified, it is provided in this section. You may recall uh that as part of the conservation development regulations, we were talking about this sort of proportionality factor. And if that's something that uh, you know, we wanted to consider here, we can certainly uh add that in as well.
I think it should be what's build- buildable. If one half of the hundred acres is a stone mountain? It's open space.
So what?
By definition of it, if it's the nature of it. So why, what does fifteen percent have to do? You know, is it fifteen percent of that? Stonewall? I mean, I think it should be what's buildable.
So what's buildable and not buildable is a matter of opinion.
So in this? The problem we can sometimes have? Is that the phrase open space gets used and abused by people?
Right.
And so the definition here for open space that uh is contained in this draft is land preserved in perpetuity? For protection of natural resources, natural features, scenic resources or community character. So it's not land which is unbuilt or unbuildable. It's land which is preserved. So when we say in the subdivision regulations, at least fifteen percent of the hundred acres has to be preserved as open space? It has to be set aside in perpetuity for? Protection of that area. So if we say only the buildable area? You're really talking a proportionality standard, Alice, rather than, you know, the overall open space percentage. And so we, again, I think we're going to end up talking about that more on the conservation subdivision side. So? Uh, just something for us to think about here? Um, in terms of the open space set aside requirement. Uh, ownership of land, it could be a nonprofit conservation organization. It could be a neighborhood association. It could be a conservation easement. Um, sometimes the challenge on a conservation easement is that public access may not be permitted. And so what's the purpose of the open space? Is it preservation of a scenic view? Is it protection of a sensitive wildlife habitat? Um, these types of things uh, you know, could be considered and discussed by the commission uh at that time.
Glenn?
Yep.
Um, I I I think we have to talk about on page fifteen, um, five A.
Yeah.
Uh, the the? The idea of at least? Um, and? I'm I'm not quite sure what that what that means. We we this this commission has struggled with those words? Um, in the past and I? Um, I'd li- I'd like to discuss whether we think that at least fifteen means um that we can increase from there? Um, and? What protections that maybe the owner of a parcel has against an overly conservation minded commission? Um, a- and whatever, it seems to me, I I would prefer that whatever percentage we we we? Land on, whether it's fifteen or eighteen or twenty or ten, um, it should be? That percentage. It shouldn't be at least, depending on the whim of the commission. Which so it's my opinion that we should get rid of that at least unless the at least means something different than what I think it means, which is that the commission has? Um? Has license to increase that at their pleasure.
That's that's how it reads.
Yeah, I would say? Around the state, it hasn't been, excuse me, applied that way. And I think that the challenge we have, I'm not an attorney. Um, but is the concept of due process. And so somebody's spent tens of thousands of dollars designing a subdivision, getting all the septic testing on the basis of fifteen percent open space. And you say, well, we want thirty. I I think that's? Perhaps violating sort of due process. So I kind of like Matt's approach here. Let's figure out wording here? That says something, it could be revert uh worded in the? In in the? Negative, in a sense. The commission shall not require more than fifty percent of the total lot area of the subdivision, but the applicant may provide more.
Do any towns give a range where they say minimum fifteen percent, max of twenty five, so that you know that it's not unlimited? And a developer could? Look towards what the max might be in terms of his layout and infrastructure build? And obviously, if it was less than the max, he would? Certainly be able to? Continue with that development.
That's interesting, Darrell. I I can't say I've seen that regulation in terms of a range. I think uh? We should establish what the required minimum is? Which is the way most of these regulations are set up. We might provide incentives? For more open space? And that's really what the conservation subdivision? Might do or conservation development might do. So that's sort of food for thought here, but I? I think as Matt has pointed out, we had that conversation on the conservation development regulations? And the wording at least fifteen percent? Um, did come up as being a discussion point. So these regs were originally crafted back in February. And that was before we had got into that detailed discussion. So I've made note of this. Um, and I think that we need to come back and revisit this and make some tweaks to it.
Does it mi- does it sound different? Therefore, does it mean something different if you said a minimum of fifteen percent?
I think it's still? Ease up the issue, Alice, that uh somebody is going to say, well, I'm offering you fifteen and the commission says, well, we want, as Daryl said, twenty five. And if I'm the subdivider, I'd say, well, I I don't want to give you twenty five. I'll give you the fifteen, but I'd rather have that? Ten percent area between the fifteen and the twenty five for me to put into lots to? Sell people a slightly larger piece of property. It's economic value to me. So I don't want to give it to you. What might make sense to do is to try to promote? The conservation development approach because I think that there's quite a bit of flexibility that it could occur in that situation. So let me think about this one.
Yeah, and what did you know? We'll do it whatever percentage we we land on. Um, I think? Just so we're we're being clear to the property owner, um, that that would make sense to me.
Yep. Uh, ownership of the land uh can be uh? The town, a recognized nonprofit conservation organization such as the Kent Land Trust, et cetera. There's a provision in the statute for fee in lieu of open space. And this could be a situation again where the commission um? Looks at the parcel and the location. And so there's really no meaningful open space on this particular parcel. Maybe it's? Remote, not accessible. Maybe it doesn't have significant conservation value. Um, on the other hand, it may. Um, but the commission could? Transfer the dead. transfer the dedication of land to payment of a fee in lieu of open space or a combination of the two, and then use that money to acquire land elsewhere. So this gets a little tricky in the sense that if we're going to be doing fee in lieu of open space, then we have to have an analysis of what the value of the land is. So we figure out what the fee would be. But the statute indicates how this would be done. So this is something I don't recall off the top of my head, whether it's in your current regulations, but it is a process that some communities found very helpful.
It is in our current regulations, Glenn. Our current regulations also go into detail about how we calculate that, the fee, where we don't do that in the new regulations. Or as far as, as far as I, I got to reading. Or as far as I picked up in my
So that's a good point, Matt. So what the statutes say is that the, an appraiser is hired to produce an estimate of the pre-development value of the property. And the commission can ask for 10% of that as part of the subdivision approach. Depending on how much the appraiser charges, that can diminish the real value of the fee in lieu of open space. So some communities have said that the applicant and the commission can agree that the assessed value or the assessed market value of the property is the starting point for the conversation about what the fee should be. But I agree with you, Matt. We need to have some sort of definition of how that fee will be calculated. So I think that covers the open space issues. The next
One, one other thing, in, in this six D, I wonder whether the commission has any appetite to, this is on page 17, to expanding the, the fund to more than acquiring land for open space, right? So I think we had a conversation about the open, so maybe they're broadening the use of this. Is it, is it for open space? Is it for recreation? Maybe it's for affordable housing, but it goes into a, into a land acquisition fund for use for not only land preservation or for open space, but for other high uses as defined in maybe the plan of conservation development. So that jumped out to me. I thought that I'd asked the balance of the commissioners to see whether there was any appetite for that kind of thinking.
So my sense, I think the statute contains some additional direction on that or case law. I think acquisition clearly falls within the statutory purposes. I think maintenance of the property does. Affordable housing, I'm not sure that it does, Matt, in the true sense. Because it's, it's supposed to be a fee in lieu of open space. So, but let me, I made a note here. I'll go take a look at that and I'll come back to the commission with some suggestions on that. Section three E is about solar access. The statutes require that the commission encourage and consider solar energy techniques. So this was a big issue in the 1970s. It's still remained in the statute. Really what we should be doing is asking the applicant to submit a letter saying that they have considered using solar energy techniques. And in some extreme cases, there could be solar access easements on adjacent parcels. But generally speaking, the lot sizes in Kent are big enough that people can, if they want to do solar, they're going to find a way that they can do it on their, on their property. And then I think the next
There's this language in E, it says, as long as the solar energy techniques would not significantly increase the cost of housing to the buyer. Any sort of standards for determining what is a significant increase in the cost.
Original legislation still be had to do with passive solar techniques. So this would be situations that, you know, trees on your property mean that I can never get solar access to my property. So you might, you know, consider that as part of the overall approval of the subdivision and grant solar access easements on adjacent properties. But generally speaking, this falls into the applicant's bailiwick to consider and propose. And the language says the subdivider shall consider the subdivider being the applicant. And it's up to them to make a case to the commission that they have considered it. At that time, the commission's job is done. You don't have to condition it on solar access, but you do have to get a statement that the subdivider considered it. Section 3F is soil erosion and sediment control. We're going to, they're in the process of updating the state standards related to erosion sediment control and stormwater quality manual. So we're going to have updated URLs here or click links to those regulations. But soil erosion and sediment control is certainly an important consideration. We're now into infrastructure requirements. And this again, in a, in a more rural community like Kent, the economics and the cost of building road these days, we're getting fewer and fewer subdivisions that involve the construction of roads. But if there is going to be the construction of roads, it opens up some issues for the commission to consider and think about. So we want to have a meaningful road network created as, as part of the subdivision. You have to demonstrate you have appropriate access to the subdivision, either on a state highway or a town road or the proposed road that you're going to plan on building as part of your subdivision. And if, you know, improvement of existing roads is necessary, then that's something that will also be considered by the commission. And I've got a note here to sort of check with Mike Ziska on this. I talked with Denise Lord and also with the Public Works Director in terms of roadway standards. And generally the standards that we're looking to go towards are settling in on the following standards here. I think the important things here for the commission to consider, the right of way width is the amount of land deeded to the town. The paved width at 20 feet and 24 feet is not atypical for Kent overall. It's going to be built to the town standards in terms of the base underneath. So it's a well-built road. The roadway grade, not too flat and not too steep, I guess, is probably the best way to describe that. And then the overall road design speed is about 25 miles an hour. So what that means is it's got roadways which are not going to become speedways or airport landing strips or anything else like that. It's going to be able to curve and follow the topography and be thoughtful, et cetera, with regard to the characteristics of the site. I think there's additional standards in here related to intersection design to make sure the intersections have appropriate sightlines, that they're graded correctly for drainage, et cetera. Particularly, for example, in winter conditions. We've got standards for street connectivity that in terms of a cul-de-sac, we don't end up with a cul-de-sac which is thousands of feet in length. I think the subdivision that was built up by Kenmont and Kenwood, are those the camps? The back behind there, which with the gravel road that was looped around? Was the way, or the stone road, it was not gravel, actually a stone that, that really sort of addresses this issue in terms of making sure that fire accessibility is able to get in, that if the road were to get blocked for whatever reason, fire equipment could still get through. So street connectivity is in here for a consideration. And then the question is what happens with the turnaround design at the end of a permanent dead end road? And then if it's a temporary dead end road, the difference here, a permanent dead end will never be extended in the future. And you might have picked up from the diagram beforehand that it's got lots all around the end of the turnaround. Whereas a temporary dead end road might end at a property line and then be extended into adjacent property at some time in the future. So it's hard to know whether or not these are situations which are likely to occur in Kent in more suburban communities. These are important considerations. So quite a bit of time gets spent on these. So something for us to think about as, as part of this work on the regulations. And again, the concept of a dead end road, how many lots can we have on a dead end road? I don't recall off the top of my head what your current regulations say, but this says no more than eight building lots, including the two corner lots can be created along a dead end street without having another accessway in or through. So I have to figure out what number we think works best there for Kent. Road names, driveway requirements. Sewer's disposal and water supply, these are key elements of the regulations that if you're going to subdivide in the village center area, then the tower, if the town sewer system is available, you have to use it. But where a private sewage disposal system, a septic system is going to be used, you have to get approval from the director of health, which is Torrington Area Health District. The same provision falls in on the water supply, which is you have to provide reasonable assurance that you can provide adequate water to the site. It's not a guarantee. You may have to dig a very deep well to make it all work. But again, and we're somewhat fortunate here in Connecticut. We get enough rainfall that there's generally enough water supply for the lot sizes we see in Kent. But again, ensuring that we have adequate water and sewer is important. Storm drainage, this section based on input from Denise and from Rick Osborne really starts to address some of the drainage issues the communities are facing. Low impact development techniques, the use of new and creative approaches to managing stormwater. We refer to the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual and actually identify specific provisions in the manual which needs to be addressed as part of your subdivision plan. And again, Denise and Rick are comfortable with these and think it's going to help us moving forward. There's a lot of stuff in here about the drainage facilities in terms of how the pipes are put in the ground and the design standards for rainfall intensity and sort of other things like that. Technical standards, again, related to drainage. Wired utilities, the requirement generally is that utility wire shall be installed underground unless the commission determines that such underground installation is inappropriate or infeasible for all or part of the subdivision. So not quite sure what your current approach is. This doesn't mean necessarily on lots, but it does mean on roads. That utilities would be underground. Sidewalks and paths, I wasn't quite sure what we wanted to do here. Sidewalks shall generally not be required or provided, except that the commission can require them within the Kent Village Overlay District or were considered necessary for public safety. And then the commission may substitute roadside paths in lieu of sidewalks. They feel that that's appropriate. So this, this could be language appropriate for Kent. Fire protection, I haven't checked with the fire department yet, but I think the idea here is that when the fire equipment rolls, for example, the rolls from the fire station in the village and it's got to get up to East Kent, it's got to get all the way up that hill with a tanker. And so what some communities are doing is requiring that there be underground cisterns installed as part of larger subdivisions or some other provisions so that they don't have to travel as far to be able to pump and get additional water supply. So this, you know, again, for a small subdivision of two or three houses, it may not make much sense, but for a larger subdivision, it could. Now we're into the application procedure section. I guess I'm going to kind of speed through this a little bit. This pretty much follows state statutes in terms of the application requirements. You know, you have to submit the application, the application fee, the appropriate plans that are required. Commission can hire experts if they feel that they need it based on the unique circumstances of a subdivision in terms of what's being proposed or the characteristics of the land itself. You can start with a preliminary plan procedure if you want to come and see the commission for an informal conversation. And this is what we did with High Watch earlier this year. If it's a formal subdivision application, now we're going to be getting the detailed drawings that we really need to approve the subdivision. And those drawings, the different types are identified here. And also the requirements of what needs to be shown on those drawings is in the appendix overall. In section 5D, we get into the receipt of the application, the scheduling for a public hearing, whether or not field staking of proposed improvements is necessary or other things for the commission if they want to do a site walk or a site visit. There's requirements for notification. The question that I think comes up to some communities simply rely on the publication of a legal notice. There's a case actually before the Supreme Court in Connecticut right now about the adequacy of published legal notices and these types of issues. But the question for us to figure out is what do we want to be doing in terms of notification about pending subdivision applications? And there are some statutory requirements about notifying adjacent municipalities, et cetera. Public hearings. Commission can have a public hearing on a subdivision. It's required to have a public hearing on a re-subdivision. And those are the statutory timeframes that apply. Commission review the application. If it involves wetlands, you have to wait for a report from the Wetlands Commission to go ahead and, and act on the application, publish a legal notice of decision. Following approval, the plans would get finalized. And then at that point in time, there would be an election on the part of the subdivider about what type of approval this is. So under the law, a subdivider can't sell the lots until the chairman has signed the map saying, yes, you can sell the lots. And the conditions where that might happen is that commission got all the information it needed to approve the lots. There are no financial guarantees that are required as part of the application. So the, the approval block on the Mylar in the town clerk's office would say final approval, no improvements required. And lots in the subdivision can be sold at any time. The next type of approval might be the builder chose to build the road rather than post a financial guarantee for it. And because the improvements have been completed, lots in the subdivision may be sold at any time. Next type of approval is that a financial guarantee was provided. Whoops. This would be a situation where the road has not been built yet. And so anybody buying a lot there is going to want some assurance that the road funding has been set aside. And once the financial guarantee is provided, the lots in the subdivision can be sold with that guarantee. And once the financial guarantee is provided, the lots in the subdivision can be sold with that guarantee. There's also this other option in the statutes of what's called the conditional approval. And this basically says that the applicant can file the maps on the land records to protect the subdivision and and work away at the improvements over time. But he cannot sell any lots until either the improvements are completed or a financial guarantee has been provided. So this is a protective measure that lots don't get sold and then there's no money available for the road construction later.
Glenn, is there anything in the statute that that allows for for the road to be constructed to a certain point, let's say to to base course of asphalt? And then hold off while the lots are sold and the and the properties are developed? And then the developer comes back and puts the 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 wearing course of asphalt on so that it becomes a a new road?
And I think that's the right way to do it, Matt, but that would require this. So that you would build it to the base. You would provide a financial guarantee for the final course of pavement. And then you go ahead and sell those lots. And you know, if the builder, you know, goes bankrupt or anything else happens, the town has the money to go ahead and finish up the paving of the road. So again, it's consumer protection and that would, I believe, fall best under this scenario here. And it's again, trying to find a balance between the subdivider's rights to to run their business and the purchaser's rights to have a buildable lot with all the improvements that were promised.
And the town's rights to have a if it's if it's going to be deeded to the to the town, if it's going to become a public road, the town's right to have a a new road?
And built to town specifications, and that's what the financial guarantee would be for.
Okay.
Submission for signature for the chairman to sign the map that gets filed on the land records. The maps get filed if the plans need to be modified in the future, the process is the process that you would go through, whether it's a minor or major request. And then Section 7 is the construction procedures, that this is what the town expects in terms of the construction of a road, clearing and grading, erosion and sediment control, inspecting the improvements to make sure the road is built the way the town wants it to be because they're going to be responsible for it into the future. And then the time period for completing the improvements. The statutes don't provide for an undefined period, you can't wait twenty years to complete the improvements. They have to be done within a specified period of time, otherwise the town can call the financial guarantee. Monuments and markers need to be put in, road signs need to be put in. And then at that point in time, we get to final acceptance and maintenance of the road and any other public improvements. And that's the the end of the regulations. So I'm interested in the thoughts of the commission. We don't have sixty pages in your current regulations, in fact, you have thirty. So I've tried to provide protection, et cetera, in here for the commission, but does this this feel too much, too little, just about right? What's what's your thought, if you will, on sixty pages of subdivision regulations?
Well, I'll just have a reaction, a shot at it. It sounds like a lot, it looks like a lot, feels like a lot, but it isn't bad to have a lot. Meaning you're trying to cover as many bases as you can and not be caught unawares of something, so I would say the completeness of it is a good thing from my from my viewpoint.
Thank you, Alice.
I I think I agree, it it would mean that the commission would would be viewed less viewed as being arbitrary in its decision if there is clear guidance there and explanation of of principles and and regulations.
And I think I wanted to make sure that the commission could have things in the regulations to point to. You'll always have the assistance of the consulting engineer, in this case Denise, and then the director Rick, the Torrington Area Health District. So Ty's got a lot of people to rely on to make sure that the bases get covered. There's also provision in the regulation that if if you feel you need additional input on something, you can hire an expert at the applicant's expense. So I think that it's set up in a way, I think, to give you good guidelines moving forward to make sure that you get good subdivisions. And that's what I think is is a good approach. So I think my thought right now, Matt, and rest of the commission, if you're okay. We talked about a couple of things here tonight. What I'd like to do is have a chance to go back and start to tweak this based on what we've talked about and come back to you, or would you prefer that we just have another meeting and now start to go through a sort of page by page and pay a little bit more attention to the sidebar notes, et cetera? What would be your thoughts moving forward? It's the best way to proceed.
I made it through. I made it through a little better than half. I'm sure you noticed that I stopped making comments about halfway through.
Matt, I just thought you were so delighted with what you had read that.
So I would I would like the chance to go through and offer some comments. But I also don't want to either hold up the process from hold up these regulations from being reviewed by our partners, nor rush the process. So I I guess that I would be okay if that was your if that were your recommendation, Glenn, to send these this draft as is to the the agencies that you've described on on page PDF page two, right?
Before you did that, Glenn, would you, the places where you say check with Ziska, check with Ziska. That first, I assume.
Yep, I think I think that makes sense. Ty and I often talk about things to send him, like to just get his his feedback on. I think this is this is worthwhile. I think our next meeting, Ty, if I'm not wrong, is October nineteenth, does that sound about right? So I think that gives us about three weeks or so to be able to check with Denise, Rick, and with Mike Ziska. And then hopefully for Matt and others to take a look through the regulations. And I think at that point in time, we can bring all of the information back and be ready to make further edits to the regulations and be ready to move ahead.
That sounds right to me. So to, you know, to gather gather some additional information, think about the comments that we've made tonight, have another shot at making additional comments. And then maybe setting a public informational meeting. So it's, yeah, so if you think three weeks is enough time, Glenn, then I'd I would be in favor of sending it to the people identified in PDF page two, getting back together in three weeks and then maybe deciding to go to an informational meeting, depending on the result of that meeting.
Yep, perfect.
Alice, that's that that seems reasonable to you?
Perfect.
Okay, anybody else has a thumbs up or a thumbs down to give?
I have a small, light question that you can maybe answer. On page thirty-seven, Glenn asked if six copies were enough. And I know I've kind of brought this up before about the wastefulness of all the copies in our regulations that are required by our applicants. So at times I'll get in like ten copies of site plans and throw away nine of them. So are we ever planning to go back in person or it's just it's an opportunity to make that adjustment? I think this is a simple thing that Glenn can answer, can be answered for Glenn.
How many people do you, how many members and alternates do you provide hard copies for, Ty?
None. Well, Alice sometimes comes in and asks for a copy, but I always have a copy for the file. But truly, most of them go in the garbage.
So I think even if we go back to in-person meetings, they're going to be hybrid. We're going to need electronic copies. I don't think that I'm going back to paper, you know, I don't do any paperwork, all of my plans and specifications and all that stuff I'm looking at.
World has changed by the bed.
So I would be in favor of reducing seven to to three, maybe? I'm sorry, Shelby, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was gonna say I'm a throwback, I still like paper.
Make sure you got at least two copies there for Shelby.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, so my thought, one for Ty for the office, right? Because we need to have a record, you could have another set that's a loner set that anybody can borrow or take or look out, but they're not messing with Ty's record set. And then if they're electronic, and we could also put in language too that says additional copies at the request of the commission or something else like that, but but the baseline might be two sets and an electronic or three sets and electronic. And then we're always going to keep one for the record, right, Ty? And then the other one or two may disappear or get thrown out. Certainly better than six or seven or more.
I think so. Let's 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 say, let's say three. Three hard copies and an electronic, right? That that gives some flexibility with with the commissioners who want to come in and grab grab pieces.
And then you could you could say more at the request of the commission.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Do you want to call it now or do you want to try to just give an overview of the conservation development so that we can start to get into the into that again or or leave that for another day? What's the commission's preference?
I would be in favor of of not looking at that tonight. I'd like to like to get my head back in it. And I hadn't prepared for that discussion tonight, so I think it would be certainly for me, it would be more fruitful to spend a couple of hours, get my head back into where we landed. We left off and then maybe put that on the agenda for for our October meeting. And if we've got time, we can we can tackle it and if not, then I think it would be nice to get that sort of get that going through again because, you know, it would also be nice to finish up the the conservation subdivision somewhat in conjunction with the the subdivision regulations.
Yep, I would agree. Perfect.
So I had a question about that. I mean, one of the things I kind of felt that our discussions tonight skewed towards was giving us less flexibility for a standard subdivision. But is it sort of our objective to make it a little more rigid as an incentive to go to our conservation subdivision? If they want to have that flexibility or, you know, obviously, I I think it's good for the commission to have it in certain cases as well. So are we trying to tighten up our regular regulations, our regular subdivision regulations on purpose to steer people towards the conservation?
I I think that's a great point, Daryl. I I would have to say from my perspective, no. I think that the subdivision regulations is really the process that town and an applicant has to go through to create a lot, to be able to sell that lot and have it be a buildable lot. The rigor that's in the regulations is really to protect those interests, I think, now and in the future. If somebody does a conventional subdivision or if somebody does a conservation development, but if they're going to do it by creating lots, either way, they're going through the subdivision regulation process. So there's no real difference in terms of the documents that are required or the rigor or anything else or the bonding, et cetera, et cetera. I think the advantage, I believe, to a conservation development approach is you do get much more flexibility in the layout of the development. And you can use that to preserve the important resources and scenic views and everything else to preserve cancer rural character. So I think I think that's the main advantage. The subdivider could potentially save money on road construction, bonding and other expenses from having perhaps shorter road lengths as part of a conservation type of approach. So I I think my experience over the years has been that the flexibility that's available in a conservation development is attractive to many developers.
Okay, it's an interesting way to look at things based on your your initial statement. I always thought that the subdivision regulations were there to prevent, to protect the town from inappropriate intensive development, whereas you're telling us we're actually, you know, consumer protection.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to exclude the protection of the town. I think that's also a very important element of these regulations. But in my experience, most communities don't think about the consumer protection aspect of it. And if if the town wasn't watching this, people could be doing all sorts of crazy stuff in terms of, you know, even what Ty was saying earlier about lots not a building lot, people are trying to sell them as building lots. It's crazy what could happen. So I think I I'll take back what I said before, Daryl, and build on what you said. I think both of those motivations are important for the commission. We want to protect the town for these types of developments to make sure that they're sensitive to the land and protects, you know, the the roadway construction, other things, drainage important to the town, and also provide for consumer protection for builders and future purchasers. And I think that's a good outcome.
Sounds like a good balance.
There you go. I agree.
Karen, anything that you'd like to add or just we let Glenn wrap it up?
Well, I I'm pretty happy with the way things are going. I agree with you. I kind of I didn't get through all this last night either, so I'd like to finish up the reading of it. And I'm particularly interested in us really nailing down open space requirements and regulations. I think I see that as an area where we as a commission could possibly get into trouble in the future and to make it palable for developers.
Yep. So the only wrap-up that I have overall, Matt, is that everybody has to pledge. You're going to email Wes as soon as we're done and tell him that as soon as he left the meeting, things went just incredibly smoothly and quickly and we adjourned at seven twenty-seven. I'm kidding, all right.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to do that because then he's going to he's going to not show up.
Okay, all right, you're right. Matt's thought this through more than I have, yes.
All right, so if there's no further comment, and I'll I'll let that linger for a couple of seconds, then I think we're at adjournment. So I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Alice. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you, Glenn, for for being so thoughtful and we'll see you in
See in three weeks.
Yeah, see in three weeks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.